I would ask that you all stand and then join us for the pledge of allegiance to our flag. If you'll all bow your heads, please. Dear God, we come to you tonight to ask for your guidance over this meeting. Help each member of City Council make the best decision for our residents, our friends and our family of the city of Myhamsburg. We're going to swear in five new officers tonight. I ask for you to take care of them through their careers and make sure they always get home safe to their families. It's in your name we pray tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks to each of you that are here. For those at home, it looks like we're having a rock concert in here. The City Council chambers are full. That's always great to see. So I appreciate that. Shelby, can we have the roll call, please?
Council members Beekler.
Here.
Colvin.
Here.
McCabe.
Here.
Nestor.
Here.
Nicholas.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
And Thacker.
Here. Great. Thanks, Shelby. Council, as part of your agenda packets that Ken sent to us on last week, one day, there are minutes for our regular council meeting, which was October 21st, and we had two special meetings last week, October 29th and October 30th. Do I have any discussion over the minutes or further any alterations, changes? Do I have a first and a second to approve those?
So moved. Second.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? That brings us to the section of our meeting that we call Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is designed to let any resident come forward to the podium. You'll give us your name and your address, and you have five minutes to address the members of Myhamsburg City Council. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and address City Council? Okay, and seeing none, I will call Citizens Forum closed. It's an exciting council meeting because we have a presentation tonight. We are going to swear in five new police officers to the city of Myhamsburg. Since I've been sitting here for, what, 10 years, we've never done five at a time. So it's great to see the department here and all their family members. So thank you for doing that. Chief Rem is going to come to the podium. He's going to give us a little information on each officer, and then I'm going to have them come in front of the dais, face us, one of your family members or whoever's going to hold the Bible for you. I'll swear you all in at once, and then if you could all come around and meet City Council and shake our hands, we'd all like to congratulate you personally, and then we'll have the badge pending. Is that okay, Chief?
Yep, that sounds good.
Great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Manager Keith Johnson. Tonight's a special night, and I'd like to invite all the candidates up here. We'll just place you guys right in front of that desk there facing Council. Perfect.
That's perfect. I've been assured through MVCC they're all on camera, so smile.
Got your good side. Tonight's a great night for the Myhamsburg Police Department, as you can tell. It's always a good thing when we get to swear in new officers, but it's a great thing when you can swear in five. So tonight's a very special night for that. Each of these individuals have demonstrated and communicated a commitment to serving our community. They bring with them a servant leadership mindset that will greatly benefit our department and the citizens of Myhamsburg. I would like to take a moment to recognize the families of our new officers. Your support and encouragement are what is invaluable in their journey as a police officer. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your future support and your role that you will play. To our officers, welcome to the city of Myhamsburg's family. We look forward to seeing you and the positive impact that you will make in the community. Remember, you're not just joining a department, you're joining a team dedicated to serving and protecting our beloved city. Congratulations, and may God bless you and protect you. Now I'm going to say something very small, quick, brief that they sent me, so I can talk about each one of them and get their names exactly correct. Aaron Dufresne, there's a reason I said your name first. Aaron grew up as the youngest in a family of seven, where he learned the value of faith and community. He graduated from Chaminade High School in 2022, where he worked in restaurants, construction, metal fabrication, industry, and where he learned the trades of the importance of hard work. He looks forward to serving the community alongside his fellow officers. Thank you, Aaron. Next is Evan Plank. Before joining the city of Myhamsburg, Evan owned and operated his own construction company. It was a concrete company, and joined four full-time team members since 2023. Prior to that, he served as a foreman for B Concrete, where he led a crew completing commercial and industrial concrete projects across numerous job sites. Rooted in faith and the Lord and the Word of God, Evan has long felt a calling to serve in this field. He strives each day to live out those principles through his words, actions, commitment to others. Evan is married to his wife Charity, and together they have two daughters, Kenna and Willa. They serve together in their local church. Next up is Caleb Burke. Caleb is a proud graduate of Wayne High School in the Miami Valley Career Technology Center, where he studied fire and EMS. Well, just reading that now, Caleb. Good job. After high school, he began working at the Montgomery County Regional Dispatch Center to get his foot in the door at a public safety at a young age. Guided by his faith in God and deep calling to self and others, Caleb has always felt to lead a career in law enforcement. Shortly before turning 21, he took full advantage of the incredible opportunity offered by the Myhamsburg Police Department, an opportunity he'd be forever thankful. He looks forward to serving his community with integrity, compassion, and faith-driven purpose. Next is Christine Sorrell. Prior to Christine's employment with the city of Myhamsburg, she worked 14 years for the city of Middletown. During those 14 years, she spent time in patrol operations as a street officer and in Special Operations Unit with their narcotics division as a detective, and at the Middletown High School as a school resource officer. While at the high school, she implemented new training programs for active shooter, for students to learn active shooter and teachers, that has since continued for both school staff and responding officers, including securing funding for barricade buckets for each individual classroom. She continued a curriculum for Safety Town at Middletown and even training nearby cities to how to create their own Safety Town. Christine attended high school at Preble Shoney and continued her education in criminal justice at Sinclair Community College. Nate Whitman. Nate is 22 years old and is set to graduate from the Sinclair Police Academy on November 19th. He was born and raised in Sinnerville, Ohio. Nate's grandpa was a firefighter in Tacoma, Washington, which he began his passion for his community service. Nate and his wife Ellie have been married for a year and a half and currently reside in Middletown. I want to thank each of these young men and women to be here today. They had to go through a lot, and their commitment to law enforcement has shown and proven to be golden for the city of Myhamsburg. They really want to be here. So thank you all for that. Mayor, back to you.
And you have five Bibles?
I do.
And we're going to need five members, someone of your choosing to hold your Bibles. So those persons can come up now. On behalf of Council, I want to... On behalf of Council, I want to thank each one of you for your dedication to the career that you have chosen. The chief mentioned you're now part of a family, and it's the Myhamsburg family, and we all support each other. We wish you long, safe careers here in the city of Myhamsburg, and we will... Each one of us pray for your safety, and we appreciate your service. Okay? So I'm going to have you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, and please repeat after me. I do hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Myhamsburg. I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of my position as a Myhamsburg police officer. So help me God. Congratulations, and thank each of you. If you all don't mind, we're going to have your badges pinned on you, and then I would ask that you come around and let each of us thank you personally. Thanks. No jokes, no jokes.
Just boost them up. Madam Mayor, are you finished with them at this time? Are you finished at this time?
Yes, thank you, Chief. Thank you, family members and friends of each one of these officers. Thank you for all of our police staff that are here tonight, and we wish you the best.
The regular meeting is going to start now. You guys are more than welcome to exit. There's cupcakes, water, refreshments. There's places to take pictures with your families. We'll have you out there. Oh, I don't think the mayor's going to let you leave yet. One last quick thing for Council. We have created some new logo for our cruisers, and our cruisers parked out front here. If you have time afterwards to see it, and then we'll show you if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
I'm going to give it just a moment to let the room clear out. All right, everybody. I think we're going to move forward with all the fun stuff we've got to do now. Ordinances and resolutions. So first item on our agenda is item number one. It's an ordinance. Ordinance number 7171. Our Economic Development Director, Chris Fine, is here to present that ordinance to us. Hi, Chris.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Excuse me. First item tonight is ordinance 7171. This is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to proceed with the acquisition of certain parcels located along Maple Avenue, utilizing the Montgomery County Land Bank to do those acquisitions. These two parcels are both located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Maple and Fifth Street. You can see them there in their proximity to downtown. This is more detailed. Both of those properties are tax delinquent combined. They're nearly $100,000 in arrears on taxes. The city has utilized the land bank in the past to acquire tax delinquent properties. This would be no different. Follow the same process. We expect the cost to acquire these not to exceed $3,000 per parcel. The purpose of the acquisition is really to eventually bring forward some type of redevelopment on those parcels that would return them back to productive use, productive tax-paying parcels here in the city. We don't have any plans at current. We will basically bank those ourselves. We will maintain them as we are now and look for some development opportunities as they may arise in the future. So this ordinance simply authorizes us to start the process. We will likely acquire them in steps, one lot, and then follow that up with the other lot. But it is the intent to acquire both lots utilizing the land bank, and that's what this ordinance does. If you have to answer any questions.
Council questions of this? We did speak about it a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, we did. We talked about this in executive session a couple weeks ago.
In hearing none, the Chair entertains a motion to dispense with the requirement that ordinance number 7171 be read on two separate days, authorize its adoption on this first reading, and have it read by title only tonight.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Shelby?
An ordinance to authorize the city manager to proceed with the acquisition of certain property located along Maple Avenue, being specific parcel numbers K46002200079 and 0080, utilizing the Montgomery County Land Reutilization Corporation to perform said acquisition on behalf of the city and declaring an emergency.
All right. Thank you, Shelby. Council, do I have a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7171?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, John. Shelby, roll call?
Yes. Council members Beekler.
Yay.
Colvin.
Yay.
McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Stalder.
Yay.
And Thacker.
Yes. Great. Ordinance number 7171 has been adopted. Thank you, Chris. We'll see you in a minute. Don't go anywhere. Our Parks and Rec Director is up next for ordinance number 7172. Hi, Ryan.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Ordinance 7172 is an ordinance to replace ordinance 7040 to provide fees for Parks and Recreation Operations and Services and declaring an emergency. As Councils aware, but for those at home, in the Parks and Recreation Department, we have a comprehensive fee schedule and related policies that help govern what we charge for various operations, services, and things that we provide to the community. And so about every other year or so, we like to kind of look at these and recommend some changes. I think it's important to note that we don't recommend fee changes just as a way to raise revenue, but raising of revenue is what helps offset increases in expenses and allows us to fund improvements in some of our operations and facilities. In 2026, our recommended modifications are at both golf courses, Mount Golf Course and Pipestone, and both deal with greens fees and membership fees. And like I said before, the revenue raised from this will help offset expenses at these courses. And next year, we anticipate investing in tee expansions at Mount Golf Course, and we expect some cart path repairs and some pond work at Pipestone Golf Course, which will be discussed at a future date. At Mount Golf Course, the recommendation for membership fees is to increase 5% for resident members and 10% for non-resident members. The last time that we increased membership fees at the golf course was in 2017. In total, it amounts to a $5, $10, or $15 increase per person, depending on which age category you fall within. In terms of greens fees, we're recommending a $2 increase to greens fees. That's $2 per round. And to note that the $3 walking, $14 riding membership fee, daily greens fee, remains unchanged in this recommendation. At Pipestone Golf Course, we're recommending a $2 increase to greens fees, which takes us to the rates that you see there on the screen. Also, on the right-hand side, you can see kind of our local competitors, Yankee Trace and Heatherwood Golf Course, where they are charging rates. We are still well below the market rate for those. And again, this revenue helps increase, offset costs at the course. In terms of membership fees at Pipestone, we are recommending to increase the unlimited cart membership, unlimited play membership from $21.95 to $24.95. As the public may not be aware, the ordinance actually restricts the amount of memberships that we sell at Pipestone Golf Course. And the intent of that is really to make sure that the course remains a public course, that we don't want it to be overrun with too many members. So it sets a limit of 75 memberships sold per year. We are currently at that maximum capacity, and we have 55 people on the waitlist. And so most business people will tell you that's an indication that the market has some room to grow. We're also making some adjustments, as you can see on the screen, to some of the prepaid corporate packages and individual prepaid round packages. And again, that just reflects that $2 increase in greens fees that we talked about. Also, I want to announce, not specifically outlined in the comprehensive fee document, but we did talk about it at the council level, we will be introducing the Youth on Course program in 2026 at Pipestone Golf Course. We've had this at Mount Golf Course for a few years now, but what this allows youth to do, you can go to youthoncourse.com and sign up. It's free. That gives you access to play for $5 per round. In the past, we haven't done this program at Pipestone simply because we offer leagues Monday through Thursday evening, and typically the program is at 4:00 p.m. and beyond. We decided that in 26, it's worth trying. We're going to start this program at 3:00 p.m. every day of the week, and then we're going to monitor the use and see how that goes. So for those watching at home, it sounds like this is an interesting program for you. We think it's going to be a nice addition to the course, but just be aware that we do have leagues Monday through Thursday that start around 4:00. So you have to get out there right after school to take advantage of this program. I think that's all that we've talked about. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, questions, concerns?
I might want to add, Ryan, that for the people they're viewing tonight, to participate in Youth on the Course, they need to register at the national level, that $25 initial a year payment. So all they have to do is Google Youth on the Course, and they'll get the location and place like that. So it's $25, and then the local courses can be $5.
Thank you, Tom. All right. In hearing no more comments, the Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the requirement that ordinance number 7172 be read on two separate days, authorize its adoption on this first reading, and have it read by title only tonight. Counsel?
Salute.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Shelby?
An ordinance to replace ordinance number 7040 to provide fees for Parks and Recreation Operations and Services and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Council, do I have a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7172?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Ryan. Shelby, roll call?
Council members Colvin.
Yay.
McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Stalder.
Yay.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Beekler.
Yay.
Thank you.
Ryan, thank you. Ordinance number 7172 has been adopted. Item number three on the resolution is resolution number 3043, and it's going to be brought to you by me. We have a resolution appointing Chris Fine as our next city manager pursuant to Section 5.01 of the Charter of the City of Myhamsburg. Council, we've been through a long process in hiring the new city manager, and we had so many talented candidates, and we know key shoes are going to be hard to fill, but I think we've found someone that can do this, and he's going to have a lot of help because he's surrounded by very, very talented staff. So do I have a first and a second to appoint Chris Fine as our next city manager as of July 1, 2026?
January 1.
January, sorry. As of January 1, 2026.
Salute.
Second. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have a new city manager, Chris. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Shelby, can I have a roll call now?
Chris, I'm sorry.
Shelby, could you read that, please?
A resolution appointing Chris Fine as city manager pursuant to Section 5.01 of the Charter of the City of Myhamsburg.
Now can we have a roll call, Shelby?
You need a motion and a second to adopt the resolution.
Can I have a first and a second? You would think. I've never done this before. I have never.
We have never.
Do I have a first and a second?
Yes.
To pass Resolution number 3043? Okay, thank you. I have one more. Okay. Shelby, roll call.
Council...
She did.
I did.
Yes.
Council members McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Stalder.
Yay.
Thacker.
Yes.
Beekler.
Yay.
And Colvin.
Yay.
Thank you very much. Chris, you have to agree to stay for a long time because I do not want to do that resolution again.
You got through it, so that was...
Starting in July, I think I heard you say.
I just want to real quickly say thank you truly. I'm honored for the trust and the confidence that you have in me to allow me to serve as the next city manager of this community. I truly appreciate the opportunity. You alluded, Mayor, to the fact that we had... You guys had a tough decision and really some good qualified candidates. You were blessed with four internal candidates for this position. I think if you look at how this process plays out in other communities, that in itself is pretty unique to have four people internally applying for this position. And the fact that all four of those folks were finalists for this position is rare in itself. And I've talked to all three of those, and I can honestly say I would be happy working for all three of those if the decision would have been a little different. They're all great individuals. I consider them all friends. They're excellent at what they do, and they really provide value to this organization. I think it speaks highly of Keith and his leadership to allow us to grow in these positions. I think as an employee, I can appreciate working in a place where you have the an employee, I can appreciate working in a place where you have the opportunity to grow and become, and be ready to step up into these leadership positions. So thank you Keith for doing that. I remember back when the R word started coming out of his mouth a little bit more often. He said his job was to leave with, and make sure there were a handful of people that could step into the office, and I think he did that. And I know it was a tough decision, and I appreciate the opportunity. And that's all I have. Look forward to January, working with the three new council people coming in and all of you to get started. So thank you.
Thank you Chris. We appreciate you. Keith, we've talked many times as a council about how you've mentored a really great staff at the department head. So we do appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
All right. Now what am I doing Jeff? I'm going on to item number four on my agenda.
There you go. You're on it.
Which is a motion. And Andrew Rodney, our city planner, is going to tell us all about it.
Yes. Item number four on your agenda is a motion to approve the section four Final Development Plan for the Deer Valley subdivision. So this is just a little map showing sort of the breakdown of the various sections of Deer Valley up to this point. So the sections that you see under construction right now are sections two and three. I think up to this point, we've issued somewhere over forty, between forty and fifty building permits for Deer Valley out of two hundred lots. So things are moving much quicker than I think even the developer and home builder had expected. So they are currently finishing up construction of section three, and they've already started requesting permits for construction in that section. So they're ready to move forward and start building out section four, which is that area you see outlined in red. So that includes the extension of Deer Valley Drive, the plating of forty-two additional single-family lots. There are no issues that we could see from a staff perspective regarding this next section of the development. It meets all of the conditions of the preliminary development plan, and Planning Commission does recommend approval of this plat by unanimous decision with just a single condition, that again, they adhere to those conditions, as originally adopted as part of the preliminary plan a few years back. So with that, I have nothing further. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, does anyone have questions? It is amazing when I drive down Medlar, how, or better, how it changes about every other day.
Oh absolutely. I think on average, we're probably issuing somewhere between five and ten building permits out there a month, something like that.
Looks really good. Okay. With hearing no questions or further comments on it, Council, do I have a first and a second to pass this motion?
Salute. Second.
Thank you Mike, thank you John. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay. Andrew, your motion carries, and you have our last item on the agenda tonight, which is another motion.
Correct. This is a motion to approve the Taylor Ridge subdivision at four ninety Byers Road. So this is a proposal to subdivide an existing lot into two new lots along Byers One, about eight point nine acres. It's Lot One. Second lot is Lot Two at about eight point two acres. The initial development proposal is for Lot Number One, and that's for a new Ohio Cat Equipment Rental and Sales Facility. That particular item has come before both the Board of Zoning Appeals for Variances and the Planning Commission for a special use approval, and both of those were granted. They have yet to go through a site plan review process, but that'll be forthcoming probably in the next sixty days or so. There will be some right-of-way dedication along Lot Number Two, and that is for the extension of the Byers Road Bike Way. So as these lots are developed, that Bike Way will be constructed either concurrently with development, or monies will be paid into the roadway improvement fund for their construction at some point in time in the future. So Planning Commission does recommend approval by unanimous decision with that one condition, that construction of that Bike Way or any other required public improvements be done along with development or a payment into the roadway fund be made. So with that, I have nothing further.
Okay. Council, questions of Andrew? Okay. You heard the motion in front of you. Do I have a first and a second to approve it?
Salute.
Thank you Jeff.
Second.
Thank you Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you very much.
Andrew, your motion carries. Thank you. All right. Exciting meeting tonight, right? So let's go down to councilwoman that. Oh, I'm going to have to talk about study session first. We do have a reason for a study session tonight, and in the study session, they're always open to the, to the public to join us. Tonight, we're going to talk about an entertainment district update, cybersecurity update, and utility rates. Sarah Becker, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. I know you had lots of traffic to contend with tonight to get here. Sorry to hear that.
I told Councilman Stalder, close your eyes for prayer and open them up, and here I am. Worked out just fine. I want to congratulate the new officers. It's always exciting to see people joining our police force. I know they're going to fit right in and really enjoy their time here. I think all the officers that come here really find it to be a family in the city and an atmosphere that they stay for a long time. So welcome to them. Always excited to see that happen. Obviously, I think probably the real hot topic tonight is that we have a new City Manager. Fortunately for me, I've been here sixteen years. I got re-elected today, as did some of the people in the council, in the audience, our new council members. But this makes, it'll be at least twenty years that I'm here now after tonight. And this is the first time this has ever come up. We've had a fabulous City Manager who's been with us. He started just right before I did. So we've been together pretty much the whole time. So this is quite a process that we go through to select a new City Manager, and we had some wonderful candidates. Dave Collinsworth is here tonight, somewhere. I saw him for a minute. He helped us, you know, do the recruitment and find a new City Manager and did a great job assisting us. And I just am so in awe. I think, you know, you go through the process and you see the resumes of all the people that come in and the work that they do to apply. They have to submit lots of kind of like written answers for things, and they do background checks on them. There's just so much they have to go through. And to have so many really qualified, wonderful candidates be willing to go through that process with us, just I think made me feel really good about what we've built here as a community, that so many people want to be a part of that. And, you know, it's been mentioned a few times tonight, but to have four internal candidates, and I think there probably were some more people here too who probably could have applied for this position, chose not to for different reasons. But it speaks a lot to Keith's leadership to bring so many really great candidates in, knowing that someday he would retire, and there'd be an opportunity for us to bring somebody up from the ranks to fill that position, and really set us up with a lot of really great people. And to have them come in and talk to us, they went through two different interview scenarios, and just really, it was amazing to me to see. I think, you know, we see them through the council, the council process where they're presenting things to us and we interact with them at a limited amount. But to see really the things that they deal with on a day-to-day basis, the different experiences they've had, all the different responsibilities they hold, and really the immense work that they put into their positions here. It is really, I mean, I just, I walked away from that process having so much more respect for those four internal candidates, to see how much they do for the city, and really through the process to feel how much they truly love Miami'sburg and want to stay here. And all of them said, even if they weren't selected, you know, they love Miami'sburg so much. They're very happy in what they're doing and have just such a tight-knit group. It's exciting to me to just see and know what our future will hold. I think everybody was a little bit nervous about Keith leaving. So, you know, we have found a really great person to kind of step into that position. And I'm just excited for what the future holds. And it just makes me, you know, you get kind of like a warm feeling knowing that so many great people are a part of this internal community of Miami'sburg and are working so hard to make it an even better place constantly every day. So thank you to the three. I know Leslie's working the polls tonight, so she's not here, but thank you to the others that were willing to do this and go through this process with us. And just, we valued you so much before, but I think getting kind of like an inside look at what you do day-to-day and knowing how much you guys give to us, I just appreciate you so much more. So thank you.
Thank you Sarah.
That's all.
Stalder?
Thank you Mayor. I got to agree with Councilwoman Thacker. She pretty much covered it all, but we had four excellent candidates. And it was, it was a privilege for me to be able to talk to all of them. I mean, their qualities are at the top. So I want to thank each and every one of you. Chris, congratulations. Chief, congratulations on our five new, five new police officers. Looking forward to their future with the city. With that, that's it.
You're not allowed to poach one of them for the fire district.
I can't. Well, we're going to have to do it quick.
Councilman Tom Nicholas.
Thank you Mayor. Yeah, I too would like to congratulate our police officers. I think as was said, five at one time is probably a record that we've done, but that's, that's great. Maybe the, maybe the trend is turning a little bit now. I know there was a little bit of a downswing in public service as far as police and fire, but hopefully it's ticking back up in the interest for it. So that's great. And I know lots have been said about our interview process that selected Chris Fine, and I too want to congratulate Chris. But I also would like to acknowledge, I think initially, we had nineteen people apply for the position, of which with the help of Dave Collinsworth and his management group, we cut that down to eight, or seven, I think it was. And then we interviewed seven and then to four. So, and the final four, as was said, were inside candidates. And I agree with what's been said, that those, those four people did a great job in their interview, and it was a tough decision for all of us to come up with one. But we do have a great new City Manager in Chris, and I congratulate him. And I do want to mention a big thank you again to Dave Collinsworth. I forget exactly the name of his group, Keith, was it Management?
Management Advisory Group.
Management Advisory Group. And if any of you have been in Miami'sburg for any number of years, Dave Collinsworth was an Assistant City Manager here at one point in time, back in the late sixties, maybe early seventies, and then progressed to Tip City as City Manager, and finally to Westerville as City Manager. And he came back to help us and did a great job. So thanks Dave, and congratulations Chris, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Tom. Vice Mayor Steve Beekler?
Good evening Mayor. Boy, lots, lots been said about the five new officers coming on board. I want to congratulate them, as well as Chief Brenman, bringing an outstanding group in, and wishing them a long and safe career here at Miami'sburg. Also, you know, Chris Fine, congratulations. And I think you said it just as well as anybody else about the respect that everyone here shows towards the other candidates we had. It was a tough decision, and one of the hardest ones I've ever had to make. And congratulations, you said it well about the quality of people that we have here on staff. And also, next week is Veterans Day. An early happy Veterans Day to everyone who served our country. And I know everyone here appreciates that. And thank you. And I'm sure Councilman Colvin will have other things to say about what's going on in the community here. So thank you.
Cue Councilman Colvin.
Thank you Mayor. Well, congratulations again to our five new police officers. As was stated, I wish them all a very happy, safe, long and healthy career with us. Congratulations to Chris Fine. You know, hiring a City Manager is the most important and difficult decision that a council member has to make. I am forever grateful to all four finalists and for all they have done professionally for our city of Miami'sburg. But really, I want each and everyone to know that I, how much I care for them more as human beings. And thank you all again for your continued service and dedication to our city. As Vice Mayor Beekler stated, we are, we do have Veterans Day coming up. We will have the Veterans Day Ceremony next Tuesday at eleven AM at Veterans Memorial Park. I hope everyone can come out and honor and celebrate those who served our nation. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you Ryan. Councilman Mike McCabe.
As usual, much has been said very well. It's striking to see the youthfulness of our new police department people. And I'm proud of that. I'm worried for that because it's a very difficult, responsible job. I've got a lot of, you know, to be aware, but anyway, welcome aboard. Probably one of the most difficult types of sorting out facts and people I've ever experienced in selecting Chris this year. Well, congratulations, Chris. Each person that we interviewed had their critique, they had their expertise that was very impressive. Caught my ear and eye in thinking of what they do and how well they do it, and how much we benefit by those people in our operation. So thank you. There's only one being the winner, but we've got quality people, so it's very impressive. We lost a veteran that many of us know this week, Bobby Zink. Keith and I have talked, the Chiefs talked to him many times. He was a, he was a real veteran. He was a good, there's so many people that think so much of him. You have, you either, probably either don't like him or you really like him. Depends on how you handle it. Because I have a mayor lives right down the street from him, and she dealt with him too. What a guy. So he's going to be there where he belongs. That's an up, not down. And one more thing, it's very important. My university football team is playing Miami of Ohio probably right now. It's the MAC Tuesday night TV show, so I'm looking forward to that too.
Thank you Mike.
Thank you.
Councilman Jeff Nester?
Well, I'd just like to say welcome also to the new police officers, and glad they're here. And Chief, you did another great job. And you even did a good job designing the new police cars. You did a nice job on that. It looked very nice out front.
Thank you, but that was not me.
Just take the credit.
Yeah. And also thanks to all the candidates that applied for the City Manager. They all did a very nice job, and congratulations to Chris. And also, on the Veterans Day, after we get through celebrating that, you can take a little walk to Good Hope Church and donate blood that day. So there'll be a blood donation that day right there at the church. Walk across the tracks and there you are. But, you know, other than that, thanks everybody for coming out tonight. Please, and appreciate our police officers. And Keith, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks Jeff. Keith, our City Manager, this has got to be sort of a weird night for you, hasn't it?
Well, not if you said next July. I was actually, I was just looking at the look on Chris's face. It was not a, he looked a little surprised. I appreciate the kind words tonight. I think if there's a theme tonight, and we say this at every meeting, we truly have the best staff. It's been my privilege to have hired all the candidates that you interviewed. And they're all the best at what they do. We've also talked about the chief tonight. Again, outstanding job. Just in the short time period that he's been here, what's happened to the department has been phenomenal. And these four young, five young individuals that we sworn tonight, aside from there being five, they are five outstanding officers. They'll do tremendous work here. And we go through a significant process for these kids to have been here. It's not easy to make it through our process to get here, but we try to hire the best. And, but again, I, I think if there is a theme, we have a tremendous staff. And yes, Councilwoman Thacker, there were others that could have applied that would have made the job even harder. But again, it takes a lot to step up and put yourself out there. These four individuals did. They're all outstanding in what they do. They're all the best that we've had in the positions they're in right now. So I'm going to miss that part of stepping away, but I have another month.
Yes you do.
I do have one time-sensitive item I want to bring up tonight. And I was talking to the chief earlier today. The Police Department is working with Hope For Miami'sburg and the Miami'sburg School District, and they're setting up a toy drive, which is kind of unique. We haven't really been involved at this level. But they're going to be running this between now and the first part of December, and they're going to be collecting toys there in the Police Department. And those toys will be wrapped and presented. They're going to be given to families of children, either in newborns up to twelve will be toys, and then the thirteen to eighteen-year-old group, gift cards and toys. But again, all coordinated through Hope For Miami'sburg. There is a, on the city's website and on the Police Department's website, there's a posting of what this looks like, as well as an idea of the gifts and items that you could purchase that would be appropriate. So thank you to the chief. I know he's not alone in this. He has several officers that are very dedicated to this. It's an important way to show that we get back to the community in a good time of the year to help those who are less fortunate. So Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you Keith. Phil, I know it's a challenge keeping me in line, but thank you for doing it.